There's one five fifty to make the adjustment.
Broadway.
Broadway.
So if you just want to back up ten extra minutes, then you'll start. Since you're doing it in a township savings time.
Okay, if this falls, it's Scott's fault.
Yeah. Well, I got big shoulders.
All right.
You'll be doing twice a year.
Never fails, right?
January February, we believe, all this.
That's usually what it is.
Pushing against that.
They're saying we're going to do a lot of snow this year.
Well, I mean, we had that storm the other day. I think that's where they say something about salt. Because usually when the snow is just.
Right.
So that's early second now, seeing salts and kind of like.
We were in Chicago and I was having to get out because we were planning on to be some bad. And there was a little storm warning and it was just nine inches of snow.
How much experience do you have your data center type of situations?
Not too much, it's kind of new. But we have a lot of other people in the firm that are working on them because you've seen them some in the west side a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
So. But that's why I was saying in terms of that, the approach would probably be similar.
Just wondering how. And if you'd be available or if you're out for work.
Yes. I think I am.
Oh, but I mean, we can start the discussion with that.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. And then whatever comments you have, I could draft up something really rudimentary. Something to talk to the guy at the discussion. Yeah, exactly, yeah. Sometimes I like doing that, just so at least. When you're all over the place in your discussion, you give them something to react to, then it's like a little bit, a little bit better.
I don't know for sure. I think it's something to verify that. And the quorum, I think it was the gathering, when this was here this morning.
It's got to be close, right?
I think it's fifteen.
Yeah. I am available if you need to. If you want to, go ahead with it.
Yeah, we'll talk about it. See what all there is in office. I mean, I know it's your accessory structures, just. It's totally different, you know. You know, it's there at work. I got corn and grain up here. I'm ready to corn and grain.
Yeah.
It's funny and a lot of people like. I can go with that. It's not even really, certainly the things that you know. Imagine healthier processing. You send your stuff out and it's on. They take his deer from your deer and not here now. You don't know. It's in, you know, she'll. Bowled one of these sauce, we don't some butter. He always carry us to start and they send it to a.
No, okay. Be gone?
Yeah, he sends it out. No, we're talking sausage. You get the sausage made up, they send it out next. You could get, you could send your corn fed one of them. Chances are you're going to get somebody that's dear of the. And you don't know what they did. Sit on a cart.
Have you mentioned how? Yeah, he was popping on the highway.
I got a flame knife, I hang so much.
It was like ten minutes.
That's right.
We should all stand up and have a round of applause when he gets here.
But he has applications. I'm letting go of it. This is a good deal for my historically difficult time of year for. We're heading back one time across the bridge.
Oh.
And. I assume so. Start gap in the town. And the normal expansion. Before they say. Yep. Decisions. Will go. Need to be.
And I have read off to this, yes.
Yeah.
In a way, our bylaws.
I hear bells.
In the other town. One of those.
Hey, should we have a round of applause? So you were out hunting. I'm just kidding, right? Just trying to follow you.
This week, that's probably a fair excuse.
I know, right?
Thank you, everybody, for being patient. For those who didn't get the story, my youngest got sick, so I'd make an unexpected style.
Hey, that's okay.
We now have a quorum of four members, so we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands what a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion in support to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes for October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting?
We move to approve the minutes of the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five meeting.
And I'll support that.
Motion in support to approve the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Minutes are approved. We'll go to call to the public. Any public comments regarding agenda items? Hearing none? We will. Move for to the public hearing. I will accept a motion to suspend the regular meeting and move to the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion in support to suspend the regular meeting and move to public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, we are now in the public hearing. Reading of the public notice. Or so, there's two public hearings. So I guess should that.
It's one public hearing, two topics.
Two topics of a public hearing.
We're fine. I know we talked about this, but yeah, the way that it's structured.
Okay.
We have a public hearing, we have two items on the agenda for that public hearing, so we just go by agenda item after.
All right, so for items two, three, four, five, we will just do those all in one topic?
We do that for the first topic, then we do that for the second topic.
Before we move on to review?
Before we go back into the regular meeting.
I know, but what I'm saying is, should we go to, should I read the notice for the first one and then the notice for the second one? Or read the notice for the first one and then?
Add your discretion.
Okay, we'll, we'll just go through each of those steps for item one and then repeat it for item two?
Perfect.
And Mario seems to agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with Ross, so that's all.
Okay. So item one, reading of the public notice. To receive public comments or notices hereby given that the Tyrone Township Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November eleventh, twenty twenty five, beginning at seven P M. At the Tyrone Township Hall, eight four two zero Runney Lake Road, Fett, Michigan, four eight four three zero. The purpose of the public hearing? Item one, to receive public comments regarding a request by Ork Creek Dream LLC for a proposed shared private driveway and a proposed private road at the corner of Dean Road and Parkwood Drive in Fett, Michigan, as part of a land division. The parent parcels are parcel ID four seven zero four, one nine, one zero zero, zero two zero, and four zero, four seven zero four, one nine, four zero zero, zero zero one, Zone R one, single family residential. Reference Tyrone Township zoning ordinance number thirty six, article twenty four, private road, shared private driveway, and access easement standards. Review of the application. So this item was already presented to the planning commission at the last regular meeting. And we had some, some feedback to the applicant and they have provided some, some revisions there. And some, and some potential, and some other requests regarding fire approval, fire service approvals. And so I will. Allow the applicant, if there's anything that you guys want to state or at this time?
I think we're good, should be good. Defer to Ross, if Ross is happy, I'm happy.
Anything, so then we will move to. Public comments regarding item one on the public hearing. Hearing none, we will move to planning commission and planner comments regarding item one of the public hearing. Any? Any discussions? Ross, anything that you have to add?
I'll note that, you know, after the previous discussion, after the last review of the application, the applicants have provided everything that was requested of them. There's one piece that we still don't have, but I know is in the works, which is the fire department review, which we do know the applicants have had some discussion with them already. We're pretty confident what that's going to look like, but if we're going to, you know, make a recommendation for the project, I would suggest that that be a condition is, you know, confirmation that. The conditions put in place by the fire department having jurisdiction are adhered to and verification by the planning commission subcommittee to confirm that they're received and adequate.
Thank you. We have received some additional correspondence since the last regular meeting when we reviewed this application. I'll go over that from the Livingston County Road Commission. The following private road name has been reserved and entered into the road name inventory and Shannon Woods Trail. Another correspondence. Public comment written. High Scots and Shannon Woods Trail will be developed as a private road that Livingston County Road Commission will not be doing any maintenance of any kind on it. Kathy Talmage, Livingston County Road Commission. Oh, that wasn't, I guess, public. So that was just confirming that, that the county, there's a requirement that we asked last time to confirm that the county doesn't want to maintain this road. They don't want to maintain this road, as, as expected. Any further discussion on that topic?
So the only thing that I have to add is the, we do have maintenance agreements and it looks like something that is intended to be recorded. I would want to ideally see signed and recorded copies of those documents. I don't know that it necessarily needs to happen before we make a recommendation on it, but like Ross was saying, we could attach that as something that would need to be done before final board approval, so.
You can include it as a condition, because ultimately this is a recommendation the board's going to have the final say on all of those items that you, those documents, as I understand, would be everyone who lives on the ground would sign it.
Well, and, and again, I can't represent you, but you'd have to have the current owners of the property sign everything. And that should give you the basis to record it and then it would be binding on, on future owners if it was implemented properly, so.
I guess from either a planner or planning commission members, the language in those documents, any, any comment or, or questions, concerns with, with the language in them?
I guess I was saying with the chairman, just that initially, the initial submittals were more generic in character, whereas now they're more specific to this development and more specific to whatever agreement the property owner wants to have with the future property owners. And so as long as, as long as it's more specific to them and it meets individual idea of that jointly they will maintain the road, then, you know, that's, that, that's our main concern, that there is a, that there is going to be a relationship of parties, a part of the association to maintain it. So that's, that's great and I would just concur with other, other comments that have been occurring. I did my initial review, had some comments. The applicant provided clear answers at the previous meeting and they've also provided additional reviews and additional documentation, as you've noted, from the road commission. So I would just recommend granting approval contingent upon any other necessary approvals from the fire marshal or other entities, so.
This is previous correspondence from the applicant's engineering. But we've already seen that they, they changed the culverts. That was, that was old correspondence. So the change, the big change in the site plan was just adding a sign? Was, was there other changes?
No, that's all that was requested.
Yep.
To get the spot.
I believe so.
Locate where the sign would be.
Any other comment or discussion from planning commission members?
It's pretty straightforward.
Any things from you, Ross, or Mario?
Nothing else.
Okay, we will. Close the planning commission and planner comments for item one and then we will move to item two of the public hearing. I'm reading of the public notice. To receive public comments regarding proposed amendments to zoning ordinance number six, section twenty one point five five, medical marijuana caregiver operations. So review of this application, this is something we've been working on for quite some time. Currently, we are under moratorium for medical marijuana applications. That the board put on and, and asked us to relook at this. And so we've spent quite a bit of time with the help of both our planning consultant, Mario, and legal counsel. At Foster Swift to go over this and we've made quite a, quite a bit of revisions. In the last edits, the last version of the document that we have, we did have some comments from legal counsel about, primarily about. Not using the caregiver's card or the patients, the caregiver's patients cards and identities. And we talked about that at, at the last meeting. And I think we have a plan to, to, to address those comments. But we don't have, at this time, we do not have an updated version. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I think once we get in back into the regular meeting and we get to this topic, we can discuss. Any potential approval and, and contingencies for, for those comments from the legal counsel. Anything else to add on the review of the application, Mario?
Uh, no, just that I concur with the attorney's findings and believe they're all appropriate because, well, I have no legal opinion about those opinions. I just acknowledge that they've made those changes and I will make those changes if directed by planning commission because they, because the attorney deemed them necessary.
So let's see, the moratorium is until November thirtieth, correct? Am I right in that?
December.
December?
Yeah.
It, it is December seventeenth.
December seventeenth?
That's correct, yep. So we will move to receive public comments on item two of the public hearing. Hearing none, we'll close the public comments. And we will move to planning commission and planners comments regarding item two of the public hearing. One thing I do want to note is that the, in addition to. The zoning ordinance amendments, we, we have drafted some regulatory ordinance amendments. That is not required by the planning commission to, to review or, or draft, but, you know, we, we worked up a plan with our planning consultants to, to handle these together. And our, our plan is to, to make a recommendation to the board. And that, that is not required, a public hearing is not required for that, but we, we still plan to discuss it anyway. So any, any comments from planning commission members regarding item two of the public hearing?
I was pleased with, with what we came up with. I think it's, I mean, the changes would need to be implemented, but.
Yep.
With those changes accepted, I'm happy with it. I think it's as, as strong as we can make it at this point.
Agree, and I think you had some really good input along the way there.
Thank you.
And you two, Mario, the very good job. We, we took some time to work through this and I think it's going to be good. So we will close the planning commission and planners comments and I will accept a motion to close the public hearing and move back to the regular meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Have a motion in support to close the public hearing and move back to the regular meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, moving back to the regular meeting, there's no new business. Moving on to old business, item one, Ork Creek Dream LLC, proposed shared drive, private driveway and proposed private road. As we mentioned during the public meeting or the public hearing, that this is already, already been reviewed by the planner. The applicant has dressed all items that have been requested. And I, I think what we need to do now is just put together a list of conditions for a potential motion for approval.
So a fire, fire review.
So let's, let's, let's state that. Condition one is applicant to receive a letter from the fire authority to.
I would say to adhere to conditions placed by fire authority having jurisdiction as confirmed by the subcommittee. Or something along those lines.
Well, the, the subcommittee is gonna. Is, is gonna review and approve, and approve the.
Lots.
The updates.
Right.
Yeah.
So the condition should be applicant to.
Yeah, your two conditions put in place by fire authority having jurisdiction.
I guess, to ask applicant, you've already contacted the fire authority?
That's correct.
And so they're working and figuring out the conditions.
And, and just so we all understand what that condition is, our road is, is X length and then there are small parcels that are beyond that, that the local fire authority wants everybody to understand that they will not be responsible for, so we will be responsible for our own fire suppression within, within any lungs. So for those three parcels, two of which are owned by two guys here, and then only one that will hopefully be sold elsewhere. We will receive written confirmation that those three parcels will have strict limits within the law. That's the condition that we understand.
That's, that's expected conditions. But you're willing to adhere to the conditions, whatever they.
Of course.
Okay, so.
I don't know, Zach, do you want to state the potential?
Yeah, I, I made some notes earlier and I was actually looking at the document just now thinking about that. So there's two documents that we've been presented with. I, I think the condition would.
Back to the, back to the first condition, the fire.
Oh, sorry.
So just so we can state it for the record.
I guess I would say the condition would be all approvals necessary from the fire authorities. Because the issues that the.
So, so just the, the applicant adhere to any conditions that are put on by fire authority? And to provide that letter?
Yep.
Okay, and, and then the second condition regarding maintenance agreement?
Maintenance agreement.
Which, which is what I was, I was puzzling here. I would say that the maintenance agreement needs to be fully executed by all current owners of the property. And that the original of the notice of the maintenance agreement, which is that second charter document, needs to be recorded with Livingston County Registry deeds.
So there's going to be something that's, that's going to be, I think, tricky here. So one thing that they said was two of the lots are on, no, no, two of the lots are on, but right, but then there's a third that's hopefully going to be sold off. So where does the maintenance agreement?
It's in the share driveway.
There's two maintenance agreements.
Right, right, but that's only between them two.
Right now, the maintenance agreements are all between them because they're, they're the owners.
We're the sole owners right now and as it's written, I believe it's covered by us until there are six.
Until, okay, okay, correct, okay.
Yeah, and all, all that's required from our perspective is that the current owners sign it and then it's reported with the registry deeds.
I misunderstood. I thought that there was another owner outside.
Because right now, this, this maintenance agreement is nothing legally.
Exactly.
It's just written on paper.
Right.
So once it's recorded, then that's the maintenance agreement that must be adhered to and that as you sell lots, they have to adhere to that and it can't be changed.
Right.
Okay. Any other? Any other questions or comments from the planning commission members regarding this? Application or potential conditions?
So the recording that the two of them are going to do, does that need to come here?
No, what we're going to probably do is say these two conditions are going to be, once they meet these conditions, that can be approved by the subcommittee. We'll just email it. But that way, we don't have to have a whole nother meeting.
It's a good question, though. I mean, just so that they know, if the document is signed by all the property owners, they should take it to the registry deeds. Registered deeds will actually take the original. So the original gets recorded, but they should be able to get a copy that's stamped that says received or something like that. So then the subcommittee would be able to verify that it's been recorded.
It was my understanding that we would do that following this meeting, that we can actually have tax ID parcel numbers for each parcel. Is that not correct? Should I do that?
I don't think we really necessarily need to see it recorded. I mean, that's more of, that's a board level condition.
We could, that condition can go all the way to the board, right?
That condition could go to the board before we can actually do the land division.
So the board could still approve with conditions?
Correct.
Okay.
And that makes no difference from my perspective, as long as that condition remains.
Yeah, I mean, we're more or less just kind of verifying that the language looks like it's going to be adequate and making that recommendation to the board. Because they can make further tweaks after. Why haven't reported if there's a possibility they may want to tweak something?
No, that's a good point, too. That's a good point, too.
By a majority, yeah.
That's true. That's, you know, that's legal language. The board might want, add some minutes. All right, so the first condition regarding the fire, is that something that we should put in the motion?
Yes.
That the subcommittee is going to approve that before it gets moved to the board?
Yeah, that is a document that we do want to send along with the recommendation and the application documents to the board.
To the board, okay. So two conditions so far. Any other conditions or comments on this application?
Which fire authority are you guys?
Hartland.
Hartland? Do you feel Hartland?
Hartland.
Okay.
And I'll just say that he...
Yeah, Hartland, do you feel, yeah?
We've actually met with him three, four times, you know, just trying to make sure we get it right a long time ago. He said that's never happened before, so he was like, he knew it as well. So he was happy that at least it wasn't coming after the fact.
I guess I don't have any other conditions. I would like to say that I think this is a very good development and a very good use of the land in the township. So with that, I think I'd be open to a motion with conditions.
I'll make the motion subject to the conditions discussed.
I'll support.
So we have a motion and support to approve, to recommend approval to the board that Ork Creek Dream LLC proposed shared driveway, private driveway and proposed private road with the conditions as previously stated. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Moving on to old business, item two, medical marijuana caregiver operations, proposed ordinance amendments. So, as discussed at the public hearing, we have a draft with some minor edits based on comments from legal counsel. And we potentially can recommend this, both the zoning ordinance amendments and the regulatory ordinance to, for the board to approve with conditions. That the comments from legal counsel be addressed to remove the patient's identities. Any other discussion on this item? I guess one general discussion, not really pertaining to the text of this, but you know, this is, the moratorium does expire on the 17th. Is that, there's going to be time to get this in, or?
I'm going to get it over to the county as soon as possible, once I have the final version.
Okay, that's kind of what I was getting at. Just coordinate with Mario to get that. And we got to sign that, right?
Uh, yeah.
So who needs to sign that, this bill?
The document. We'll need the head, yeah, we'll need the head of chairman and secretary. But I can always sign with your authorization as well if it may be.
Okay, so then just to, you know, get with the secretary and that way we can get it to the...
Typically, I need to expedite things because it's not always easy to coordinate. If I'm authorized to sign, I can sign it under the head.
Okay, and you need that to go to the county before the board can?
Correct.
Okay.
The regulatory could go straight to the board, but I anticipate they'll want to do it as a package.
And it doesn't present an issue for you if we recommend it even though the changes have not been implemented? Am I correct about that?
Basically, once I get verification, as soon as I get it from Mario, I'll shoot it over to the subcommittee. Once I get the okay from them, I'll send everything right over to the county.
Perfect.
Any further discussion from the planning commission? All right, I think we're, I am open for a motion.
I'd make a motion to recommend approval to the board, subject to the condition being the attorney revisions are made to create a final draft.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and support to recommend to the board approval of the Michigan, of the medical marijuana caregiver operation zoning, proposed zoning ordinance amendments and regulatory ordinance, subject to the conditions, which are, the final draft be complete with, to accept the comments from the legal counsel. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? And motion carries. Moving on to old business, item three, accessory structure regulations. We've been working on this, potential changes to accessory structure regulations and the zoning ordinance. And I will let Ross give a summary of this.
So right now, I'm just working on putting together kind of a working draft of various sections within the accessory structure standards in Article 21. As we've previously discussed some of them, that we continue to identify issues. So far, we have kind of draft language for the front yard accessory structures being changed from 20 acres to 10 acres with a few other minor tweaks that I've incorporated into this draft document. The new one that I've added, the second one that I've added here, is something that we discussed previously, which is incidental accessory structures in buildings, which currently is required that they do not exceed 100 square feet. And we were discussing the potential to increase that to 200 square feet, consistent with the threshold for what requires improvement for that. So I just kind of, very few changes, just changed that number from 100 square foot to 200 square foot in that 21.0283B. So I don't know, I guess we could pause and get your thoughts on that aspect of it. You know, what you think about that? Comments, questions, suggestions, anything?
I mean, I don't know if we discussed that earlier, but you know, it still just says 100, but to 200, but... You know, that's, this is just a draft. But that's the intent, to go from 100 to 200. Ross will clean up that text or the value.
Got it. The next section here that we had, we briefly discussed. And I don't know if you had a chance to think about it at all. Because I'm a little bit perplexed why we have these specific regulations for gazebos versus other accessory structures. I mean, why is it a shed or an open air pavilion? Why is it a gazebo treated differently? So I did include, highlight here, the current regulations that we do have for gazebos. So I was hoping that we could kind of go through those, you know, four of my parts and pieces and kind of give me direction. Do we think that we need it? Do we think that we should tweak it?
My question I have, is there a definition of gazebos?
There is a definition of gazebos. In the definition section, I'll need to verify. The Article 2. It's going to be Article 2, if you just search for gazebo.
Yeah.
Wait, 21.
Maybe it has some different thing gazebo, huh?
Well, I mean, if it's not defined, then that's even further demonstrating this might be...
Yeah, conundrum as to why, so. Yeah, I don't see it in the zoning ordinance definitions.
And if it's not clearly defined, why do we have the section? Why wouldn't they just have to comply like any other accessory structure does with the height restrictions, the setbacks, the lot area? I mean, I just can't figure out why they treat it differently. Especially if it's not clearly defined.
So currently, a gazebo is subject to, well, 180 square feet or less. So, but this counts as an accessory structure still.
Correct.
So if...
Yeah, it doesn't add up.
So I guess what you're discussing, the potential change is to just treat it like any other accessory structure.
Yeah, my...
So you could make an accessory, you could make a gazebo, whatever, we don't know what a gazebo is. We don't have the definition, but up to 800 square feet in those certain zonings or whatever, or the environment they could have, because they want it.
Yeah, if it allows for accessory structure of that size. I mean, what's the difference other than a large agriculture looking barn if you wanted to have a gazebo?
Yeah, it is odd because the only thing I could think of, that maybe they think about in the past, was in like the lake areas, sometimes if we wanted them to be either close to the lake or in an area where you wouldn't want a structure obscuring a view or occupying a space, sometimes a gazebo or more appropriately like a pergola would be something you can see through so it doesn't obscure anything. And that's only usually the ever time I've ever seen it where they need to be regulated separately from. Every other time, it's just treated like any other accessory structure. Seems like they went through and defined, you know, gave it dimensions, no greater than 180 square feet and not exceeds 14 feet in the height. But then they just make them comply with the other same detached accessory structures. I guess the only thing I could see is that they didn't want a gazebo to be larger than 180 square foot or 14 feet. But then you would just call it a different type of accessory structure.
Yeah.
Then it's just a bigger, because if they had a 200 square foot, then it's just a 200 square foot accessory structure, the more broader definition, but you still put it in the same spot. So, not sure. I feel like there might have been more intents behind it, but in the end, after doing edits, they might have changed their mind and this is basically left over from back when they thought about trying to have a specific regulation upon it or allowance. But it's just, yeah, I don't get it.
I think it's a good point you bring up, Ross. It seems like we got an issue here in the current ordinance and we need to clean it up.
Well, and I think there's a question, too. I mean, if you treat it like an accessory structure, that's going to reduce the number and size of additional accessory structures. If they put up a gazebo, they can't also put up a pole barn.
Well, that's where you're at. FR, you can do as many as you want.
It depends on the zoning. And right now, it still would need to count as an accessory.
Because I could see where we might want it to be even more open. I mean, if I'm in a relatively small residential parcel and I've got a barn or, you know, a shed, I still might want a gazebo and I don't know that...
If it's under 100 or 200, whatever incidental is, and that wouldn't count. And then your gazebo could be up to the 800 square feet that is allowable in R1s.
And if the intent was to allow for that option, like, oh, we'll give you a bonus gazebo, they don't specify it in the ordinance.
Right.
It just...
It just, it's still counted as an accessory structure.
Which I could see, what you're saying, what you're leading to is like, I bet that's what they were probably thinking. Oh, everybody can have a bonus gazebo, for lack of a better term. But they didn't carry it out. It's not, it's still...
Something we can consider, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can consider.
We want, yeah.
But then we'd also probably want to add a definition for gazebo.
We need to have a definition, so you don't build a barn and say, hey, it's a gazebo.
Right.
What do you guys feel about if it's better to change it like that?
Either way, we need to, either way, we need to clean this up. And while we're going through this, these changes to accessory structure, we got to clean it up. If we want to have a bonus gazebo or just treat it as accessory structure, it needs to be cleaned up. And I think today, you know, we can, you know, probably leave it at that until we can probably have the full planning commission here to make comments, but...
My only other, sorry.
I think it's a good thing to keep on our list to review and update while we make these accessory structure changes.
My only other comment was, one of the things we probably want to keep in mind was alluded to, would be sightline. I mean, if, and I know that's a sticky issue, but I could see, I don't know if that has to be anything complicated. It could just be something in there that says it will not significantly impact the sightline of a joint property, something like that.
We have that already for any accessory structures on waterfront properties. You know, there are specific yard locations, if they're an alternate yard location by variance, then they need to comply with the sightline.
So as long as that gets trapped in somehow, then, yeah.
And typically, then the only exemption you would allow is because, in theory, a gazebo or more, even more so a pergola, you know, because it's mainly, you know, support structures and then the roof structure, it doesn't impact the sightlines. But then the only thing you do is you allow them to get a little bit closer, basically, into that sightline or something.
That's an option.
Like, as an option, if you wanted to do that. So typically, let's just say the result of the sightlines was all structures had to be like 25 feet back. Well, maybe they get an extra 10 foot where they could put a little bit closer to the water. But it's, yeah, once again, it's a choice, as if you feel like if there was a substantial benefit to allowing for those extra structures on a waterfront lot.
I think, I guess, Ross, it was a good point for you to bring up and I think we just keep it on our...
I've got plenty more.
Okay, I know, but I'm saying, on the gazebos, is there any direction we need to give Ross or Mario to think about for future changes?
I can bring it back when we have more people or other people that had comments.
All right, continue down the list.
Well, the next one, I mean, that brings me to the next one, which is kind of something where we ideally do want to have the majority here. This one gets a lot more in depth. My thought process is based on, you know, the available planning commissioners we have today and the fact that, this could take a whole workshop, just this section, going through item by item.
Yeah.
We can start to go through it now or we can start to go through it at the workshop or...
I think maybe just highlight that, even just, I just wanted to basically, these things that we can change.
Yeah, so the general thought process was, right now, we have these special modification of requirements for increase of size of accessory structures. But we're also, at the same time, considering increasing in those zoning districts the maximum size of accessory structure to 1,200, thus making this modification section unnecessary. The thought process is, since we do have many, many variances for yard locations for accessory structures primarily... accessory structures, primarily front yards, that may not comply with the proposed changes for the twenty acres or ten acres, whatever the front yard accessory standard may be, is to change this section up to where it's for basically a modification of yard location, treating it as a variance, but not a variance, both limiting the local ZBA and, you know, making it a little bit easier on residents that haven't filled through that process. So there's a lot of things that we're willing to consider, you know, it will likely apply to, you know, potentially all residential zoning districts, and you may need to exclude certain zoning districts, you know, this one's going to be more for lower density, single family residential districts, as opposed to the increase in size, which will focus more on the higher density residential districts. So I don't think this is anywhere near what you would consider plug and play, for just changing a few words around, I think we really need to go through the items and see if, you know, some of them may apply in terms of the residential compatibility items, some of them may not apply. So I just want to get thoughts, get some, you know, opinions from everybody on, you know, how we wanna treat this, you know, just kinda brainstorm, get some ideas going, what factors are important, which ones do we absolutely need to include, which ones do we exclude, and just how can we tailor it to be suited for yard location as opposed to size.
And this one, like Ross was saying, it'll be a little bit more about having a philosophical, if you will, idea about, all right, we have these in there because we thought, in theory, we wanted, we wanted to be more strict on where they are and how big they are, but given the amount, the way that the ZBA has been approaching it, and allowing for variances, it seems like more recent attitudes towards the accessory structure says, well, there's, they're not, it's not as detrimental as we thought. I mean, that's one interpretation of it. The other could be that these other use, other locations met the specific criteria that warranted a variance. But generally speaking, when it comes to these kind of accessory structures, it is about like how the land is being used, and what is palatable for the community. And I would say that generally speaking, the, in the larger lot areas, it's always hard trying to have like a real world relationship, or idea of like, how big a structure is, and so suddenly seeing like, oh wait, we were limiting it to twelve hundred, or initially, you know, it's not that, it's actually not that big a structure anyway, that's okay to allow that as the new standard of what's acceptable, versus, and then similarly with the location, in other areas, they're like, well, no, that's actually not that close because of the size of the structure. So it really would be, so, you know, it might be something like, you know, you guys, the full planning commission taking a ride, drive, seeing where the accessory structures are, how the, how some, you know, if, maybe you've had a little bit of a cheat sheet to know, all right, this structure is this big, and it's in this location, you know, this foot away from there, you have that real world experience, and then you understand, well, I was good with this location, but this was bad, or I was good with this size, and this was still too, it's still too big, in my opinion. That way, then you can give us direction, and we can tailor this appropriately, because it could be just tweaking as much, it could be opening that spigot a little bit more, and just saying, maybe we just change it so that we find out we're comfortable with the size, we're comfortable with the location, and then that's that, and then there is no modification requirement. That's one way, one approach. The other is, like Ross says, is to tweak this a little, and we'll probably be somewhere in the middle, but it, but it's about, you know, once again, just, this is a very good process to go through, because that's what you wanna do with your variances, because in the end, you know, variance is permission to break the rules, I mean, granted, this is a process, and it's outlined, but you wanna make sure that the amount of people, amount of things that have to go to the ZBA are as minimal as possible, so.
And in terms of examples, if you do wanna list, I can put together a list, because just in the last few years, we have a very good number of front yard accessory structures that, you know, you can see pretty clearly this time of year.
I'll look through it here.
How does that work with our sightlines?
Sightlines are only for waterfront.
Only for waterfront.
Right, that's what I'm talking about with the LK ones, right? So.
Yeah, this is gonna be primarily, like I mentioned, for the lower density zoning districts.
Okay.
I mean, it may not even apply to LK one ultimately, but that's something that ultimately you need to decide and discuss, if it's only going to be certain zoning districts, if it's certain districts, if it's all residential, but restricted by size and excluding waterfront, you know, there's a number of ways we can treat that, but right now, we don't know what the applicability would look like.
What about high watermark for the LK ones?
Well, like I said, we don't know if these would apply to LK one, I mean, this is all theoretical right now.
Okay, that's how it's structured, yeah, okay.
I mean, I can't, if this is for yard location, LK one is a non-issue, because they're front yard location anyways.
Right, right.
It's for the properties off the water, in the fields, in the woods, you know, the larger parcels.
I'm just trying to think of like.
Build their homes way farther back.
In the back, yeah.
They run.
And one thing that I see, and I guess, let me just summarize the specific case where you're talking about front yard variance. Currently, that goes to the ZBA. The ZBA has strict criteria, what they need to review that on, and that cannot be created by the owner of the property. So if you build your house in the back, in my opinion, the ZBA, really, their hands are tied, they can't say.
It's a discretionary.
It's a discretionary, but I think this criteria that we have in here gives, is, gives a better real world review of, of the scenario, because in theory, if you built your house in the back, that was man-made, you can't go to the ZBA and say this, what's the term?
The hardship.
Circumstance.
Oh, oh.
Extraordinary circumstance.
Extraordinary circumstance, you know, an extraordinary circumstance can't be man-made. So if you put your house in the back, technically, that's not extraordinary circumstance, but we should be able to say, let's look at the lot, let's look at the, we need a site plan, we gotta take into account traffic, parking, noise, nuisances, and we can look at that in each, in a case by case here. So I like that issue coming to the planning commission, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree. So, I mean, if you like, I can try to take a stab at it based on what I think, and we can look at it either at the next workshop, or whatever, or you can take it home, digest it, give me additional feedback, once we have more people here, up to you, whether you want to proceed.
I think it would be nice to, I don't know if you gotta like look at them all, but maybe go back like, in your discretion, one, two years, whatever, and say, here's in the ZBA, some cases, are we allowed to look at a specific case?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let's go back and look at the, the ZBA's in certain cases and say, you know, like, how did that, what was the issue there, and how is this new process gonna change that, or make it better, or something? What are you guys' thoughts?
That makes sense. I would like, I thought the list of visual examples would be helpful to me too, so I'm creating more work for Ross, but.
Well, that's fine.
I think it would be good to put eyes on it, because it does help to visualize it.
Yeah, we don't need, I don't wanna make it like, too much work, but then we can look at some real cases.
Right, right.
Almost like a case study, and say, here's what it was before, and here was that applicant's issue.
Right.
And how did it work out in the ZBA, and then how can, how would this new process treat it?
I could have that, you know, by workshop.
I think so, I mean.
I'd have a workshop.
Can you include ones that didn't get passed?
If I can find it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be the issue, maybe.
So, so that.
Turns out, there are a lot of extraordinary circumstances.
That, to me, is very responsive to the community, that if everything's getting passed, then we need to adjust our.
Yeah, that's the whole reason why we had this increase in size, then, because there was just so much need for it in the ZBA, you were seeing too many of them, so that's why we did this in the first place, so.
You know, I just, I, maybe I should be asking you, when it comes to, sorry for going back, I didn't say anything, but I had this gazebo thing on my mind, what are other municipalities that, maybe I should ask you this, what are other municipalities that, that you work with are doing with gazebos?
In terms of gazebos, honestly, nobody really cheats many separately.
Okay.
It's just another accessory structure.
Okay, that, yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out.
But I will say, my whole idea, mentioning of pergolas, is I do have lakefront communities that do have relaxed certain items, and allowed for those gazebos, or those pergolas, to be within that twenty-five foot setback, that's where I got my numbers from. Because basically, everybody, the communities have typically a twenty, they just go with a straight twenty-five foot setback from the water, from the high watermark, and then there's just nothing in there above nine inches that's permitted, so you can put what I call a platform deck, at the edge of water, you can put like a one-step platform dock or deck for your things, but nothing else as a structure. They've relaxed that to allow for a ten, up to ten feet closer to the water, you could have a pergola structure that's only a certain square footage, I think there's a hundred and forty square foot.
And it would, there would have to be like, no walls?
Yeah, exactly, that gets very specific, no walls.
In that case, you're given more relaxed to that special structure.
Exactly.
In this case, we're given stricter.
Correct. And I, and when it comes to the specific lakefront issue, because it sounds like it really isn't an issue from the modification requirement standpoint, but from just generally speaking, if we're looking at this and opening up that door, you know, a lot of times, because of the size and scale of lakefront lots, it is a little bit more of a math situation, especially with a setback and sightline situation. You get the average size of your lakefront lots, you get your average location of the houses, and then those sightlines, and then you see, all right, how much more can it be scooted up, for lack of a better word? And mainly, the issue with the pergolas was, it was just very sunny during certain times of the year, and they just wanted to have that option, because it's, it's, yeah, they just wanted, they, for their community, they decided, hey, let's allow that, because they, some people like, they said, I like when I'm on my boat, and I get to see the pergola just out there in the middle of a yard, a little bit closer, just how they decided.
So that was kinda, Ross, your list of topics on accessory structures for today.
That was the batch I brought with me, there are more items to discuss.
Yep, and I don't wanna get into this at all today, but I just touched base on it, a big one in accessory structure would be accessory dwelling units, and that's gonna be something that we need to definitely think about, and probably rely heavily on Mario, just, and, you know, because that's something that is not currently allowed, many communities allow it, and pluses, minuses, issues, and.
It's not currently allowed?
No, not detached.
Detached.
I mean, technically, if you design it in a way to where it shares some living area with the principal dwelling, I mean, it's like having a fully finished basement, which some people do have as a accessory dwelling, or mother-in-law suite, or whatever, but this is primarily what we wanna look at, is what we hold people in the past about as detached, like finished area within an accessory structure, tiny home type deals, that kind of situation.
So I don't think we're ready to give any direction on that, yet, but it's a, it's a good topic to think about, right, yeah, right now, you can have living quarters in your barn, but could, could you have apartment above your barn, and, I mean, a lot of communities allow that, and it's reasons for it, and there's, there could be issues with it, so we, it's a big item.
Yeah.
So does this also speak to Airbnb?
That's what I was pointing at.
Well, that's, I mean, different ones, short-term rental.
That's gonna be regulatory.
But that's gonna tie to it, because, yeah, now, I think a lot of the thought on accessory dwelling units are like, mother-in-law, your parents are sick, they're gonna live in the barn, but once they're not living there anymore, well, what do we do with it? Now we're gonna rent it. So there's, that's gonna tie to it, but it's not specific to that, I guess, rental policy, because that could still apply to like, your primary residence.
Right, yeah, when we've talked about it over the years, you know, that was a major concern, is, well, people are just gonna turn this into a little rental property, and that goes against the whole idea of what we're trying to consider or accommodate anyways. So we were thinking, you know, there's numbers of options that you can use, but one example is like deed restrictions, basically stating that this structure is not to be rented, leased, whatever, occupied by anyone other than the homeowner, guests, or whatever. So that is something that is a major concern, and something that will need to be looked into thoroughly. I don't know if deed restrictions are the best mechanism, but it's a possible option, you know, we gotta dive into that deep.
Did the survey that we did with the master plan, did it touch on that at all?
I believe the last one did.
Yeah, let's look it up.
I believe previous to that, it's probably, it has to have been, you know, at least four or five years now, we did send out a survey specific to ADUs.
Is it something that?
That wasn't separate from the planning, the master plan survey?
Yeah, yeah, but that was years back.
But in the master plan survey, we also had.
It was an ADU question. If I'm not mistaken.
We'll see if I can find that real fast. There couldn't be just like text comments, I'm gonna go straight to the housing section, go ahead, Kevin.
I was gonna say, so, in the, let's see, page four of the master plan community vision session, it talks about Airbnb, and how it's slash vacation rentals, and how it's something that we did not want. There, as well as tiny home development.
That's what's.
Oh, nevermind, that was the, that was the dots, nevermind, I take that back.
But that's.
That was actually referred.
So here's just one comment, I just happened to see it as I was going through, granny pods should be allowed, ADUs.
Yeah, there's actually.
But then, there was a specific question on that, non-residential, let me get to residential housing.
I mean, a lot of the calls that I get with people inquiring, you know, it's a mixture between kids that they're trying to kick out of the house, but, you know, they aren't quite there yet, or elderly relatives, family members, as an alternative to these nursing homes, and that sort of, you know, elderly living scenarios. Those are the top two that I hear of, nothing really else comes to mind. I was under the impression that if it brought in income, it was an help, but if it was free, it was. For, for the detached, for an ADU, potentially, but right now, you're right.
Yeah, I mean, that, to me, that's, that could, there would need to be like legal ways or something to do that, but like, I mean, I think that's.
That's always the issue, it's like.
Probably a deed restricted, or some other enforceable mechanism.
Did I miss? I don't know, Ross, there's a lot, we had a lot of questions in that survey.
There's a lot in there.
And I can go back and look at it, it's just a, it's a topic, I think it would be helpful to have that level of input on.
We talked about it at the last joint meeting that I can think of, I mean, this has been a topic that's been bounced around for many years.
Yeah.
And it is something that, to this day, we continue to get inquiries about.
I'll be honest, the easier, the most effective way typically to regulate them when it comes to whether they become an income issue, is if the community already does rental licensing, so that's the problem, is like, you need, a lot of the communities that effectively do it, and allow for the option for a relative, or someone associated with the homeowner to do it, you know, it's a slippery slope, definition-wise, what is a family member, you know, it's a slippery slope with, you know, what is a friend, versus, you know, being rental income, if the community is already regulating and licensing rentals with annual inspections of rental, rental property. But that's a big ask, you know, on the, on the, on the licensing of the community, and ninety-nine percent sure we don't do that here, so, yeah, it'd be, so that would be tough. So then the other option is trying to come up with somewhere in terms of ownership deed restriction or something, but, and the thing you'll always, not always face, but the thing that's always hanging over us is, every year, so the legislature says they're gonna talk about it, says they're gonna regulate it, they get close. So the legislature says they're gonna talk about it, says they're gonna regulate it, they get close and then they just drop it, uh, for one reason or another, so. Uh, you know, it could, that, we could, um, I think it's a good issue to discuss and we can try and find some solutions, but in the end. That regulatory aspect will always be there. But doesn't mean we can't put our brains together trying to come up with something new.
And I'm shooting from the hip here, so this could be a terrible idea, but have you seen where a community has. A, maybe you put down deeds, deed restrictions, which would be binding, you know, and they, and they should be enforceable. Have you seen where the community says that the neighbors have the ability to, to bring that action, I mean, because that's where the complaints are likely to come from.
Yeah, I, I would think, I, I've not seen that and I would probably recommend to not include that, but that doesn't mean that a neighbor couldn't always, and always. It'll be a complaint-driven situation, but then once again, to me, the, on one side of it, I'm always like, well. If you got a property owner or rental, even a tenant, like somebody who's renting out a single-family home. That person, their lifestyle can just be to have parties every weekend. And be loud and, and violate the zoning ordinance, they can own the property outright, they can be a, a tenant in the space and like, I have a year-long lease, I'm not here every, just every weekend they do it. So that's unfortunately, the, the situation is like, that can always fall into that aspect of it. On the other hand, I definitely see the idea that. Once, if you open the, open the barn door, then everybody's gonna wanna, not, not everybody, but the, the conception will be. Everybody's gonna wanna make that extra amount of money when they're, when they're low, and so they'll set up something to try and, you know, put a for rent sign on their property. And you don't want to do that either. But it's in the middle, it's, right now, it's in the middle of, we have people that own larger properties or they, they own a property in which. The, it, it could be functional, it could be necessary for their, for their, for their person, a person they, they have to care for, so how do you allow for that? Without going the other way, it's, it's, it's tough, but it's, I think it's definitely worthy of discussion and worthy of trying to come up with a solution that we, that might work out.
Yeah, the, the survey, here's a survey, what level of support do you have for the following types of residential development? Accessory dwellings, in-law suites, granny flats, sixteen percent strongly support, fifty-seven percent support. Eleven percent opposed, ten percent strongly opposed, so overwhelming in favor, but that's not putting any type of condition, you know, that's, that's not getting into the details, so.
Everybody coming with their preconceived notion of what it is.
If you're talking flats, I mean, that's.
Well, that.
To the house, not on.
No, no, that's, that's already allowed, but you, you, you're right, this, this question was vague, but I think the, um.
Thank you.
It, it could be, so it's not saying detached, it, it's not saying detached, but I think it's worth putting this on, on our, uh, a, a major item on our list of accessory. Structure revisions that we can talk about, it doesn't mean we gotta approve it, I mean, once we get there, we might figure out, you know, we don't want to do it, so, um.
I certainly don't have objections to somebody adding on the policy, but I think we're gonna have a problem putting too many buildings on property.
So I think, um, that, that's enough for that topic, that's gonna be a huge one, I just wanted to kinda set the, set the tone that that's coming up and. It's gonna be a big one. Um, any other discussion on accessory structure regulations? Any action that we want, um, we, we gave, we gave Ross some, some action on some of those, but any, any other action for Ross to research or Mario?
Yeah, I, I'll also state, if anyone just thinks of anything pops into your head, shoot me an email, I'll, I'll consider it, I'll add it to the list and we'll bring it up for future discussion.
So on the, um, topic of accessory structure regulations, uh, is that going to be on the agenda for, um, the next workshop?
Yes, assuming that we have, uh, enough to hold the workshop, we will have that on the agenda.
I, I think, um, if. If there's no other action on that, I don't really see holding a specific meeting next Wednesday to discuss the accessory structures again.
I, I need to still verify that we'll have attendance, it's not looking good right now.
Well, you know, it's, um, so it's, it, what do you guys think, is it, we just talked about it here, we gave a little bit of action to Ross, but, um. Anyway, well, we can decide that.
Yeah.
That was a little off topic, sorry, um, so. Uh, moving on to call to the public. Any public remarks regarding anything?
Well, I was looking up the definition of flats here. It's that, um. Part of a term for America's called apartment often applied to self-contained living unit that is usually on one floor.
Can we get you to come and speak a little?
One floor.
Scott, uh, can you come up so we can just have your.
Well, it wasn't public comment.
All right, so any public comment?
Oh, a public, oh.
Public comment, I, I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I just, it was not a court, I just.
Understood.
No.
The flat, Scott beat your way like, the, the term of flat is, it was common term for America's called apartment, often applying to self-contained living unit that is usually on one floor. So like I said, I, listen, I've had my kids living with me, my daughter can move back, my son and his kids lived in my house, didn't add on as a, the basement of second story of my house. I don't think most people would object to have anything like that in their homes or adding, but you know, we, we ask for larger lot sizes. And I just think we're gonna start breaking these ten and twenty acre parcels up and putting more houses on it. And then we already fire, we're discussing, it's just the policing of all this, it's just, we already see, even with our special land use, the abuse. I mean, they come in here and I mean, we're chasing after them and then they're suing us, so I'm just, I mean, I just worry about. Mother and family quarters like the Waltons, we'll just add another part on the house and we'll, we'll bring them in, you know? I mean, other structures on, like living structures, I think we're running a big ball of trouble, so.
Thank you, Scott, any other public remarks?
I just wanna ask you, where do we stand on master plan? Is it going master plan?
Um, the, the master plan is, has been approved and it's, the, the board, um.
Orders.
Yeah, you, you're talking, yeah, the master plan, that was approved last year, um, that believed that, I'm just throwing it, uh, September?
I think they're about, so it was the.
It was over a year ago, it was over a year ago.
We don't look at that again until five years from the day it was about.
It's live, ma- master plan's live, um. Well, we, we are, we're talking about accessory structures now, we talked about marijuana today too. So there's, this is, um. Yeah, two, currently we're working on two ordinances, revisions. And there, and there's others, you know, you can look at the ordinance and it's not. It's not perfect by any means, but we're, we're making changes. Any other public remark? Hearing none, um, move to miscellaneous business.
John, I'd like to.
Go ahead, tell any questions.
I would like to, um, ask about the ex officio members since we're missing a member and. We are short of. Quarrels more than.
Yeah, we barely made court.
Yeah, very, very good point, um, so to, I guess to overview of that topic, um. You know, me reading the, the bylaws, you know, of the planning commission. One member shall be appointed by the township board to serve as the board's ex officio on the planning commission and it, it, we, um. It's, I, I think it's, since I've been on the planning commission, I think it's, it's very valuable to have that connection with the board, I mean, we, we always have Ross, he's always a good connection, but to have a board member sit here with us. Um, is very important. You know, as, as you know, the, the board has removed our previous ex officio and it not appointed one in replacement, um.
Okay, I think a good example of that is, you know, we had our regulatory stuff right here, the draft, so getting that, you know.
Yeah, the, um, the regulatory ordinance, just pretty much everything, all the business we do is nice to have, I mean Kurt Schultz, I always thought did a great job of, of keeping us in line with what the, you know. That link, you know, you need that link from the board to the planning commission, so I, um. I, I think, and, and that, and just another member, right now, we're, we're locked at six because that one shall be appointed by the. You know, lawsuits, appointed by the township board, um, and so, um, I, I think, um. Probably, uh, Kevin and I can, can, can ask, um, can, can, can I ask supervisor about that, because I, I reckon, I agree, I think we should have an ex officio.
I got something, so that maybe we need to. Put on for the future, but you know, like we're seeing a lot of this data center stuff go on. Maybe, maybe we need to have a discussion, how do you, do you have any comments on that, is that, am I, am I out of line saying this stuff?
No, no, I was gonna bring it up if you didn't, it's, it's a very hot topic, it's something that we're seeing a lot in our neighborhood communities elsewhere throughout the state. I have a feeling that it's likely something the board's gonna task us with anyways, um, you know. We have no applications, we haven't had any inquiries, but.
Do we need a moratorium at all?
We, we don't need the moratorium to start talking about it, but if we think that it's a threat, the township board can't put a moratorium into place. Like I said, at this time, I have not heard anything, um, but as we've treated some of these other topics like the renewable energy, like the extractive industrial. It might not be a bad idea to just get out in front of it before we hear anything.
Some of them are pretty close to home.
Yeah.
You know, I, once, once we have one, it's too late, so.
So I, I can start putting that on, um, I mean, as early as if we have a workshop, um, to just kinda start, um, some dialogue on it or I can put it up.
And again, I'm not trying to, I mean, for the record, I'm not trying to like stop progress, but I'm just trying to manage progress, right?
That's what we have to do, when, when there's issues like this that come up, that where there is a potential threat to, you know, natural resources.
Kinda like EI, right?
Exactly, exactly what we did with EI, exactly what we did with, um, the renewable energy.
So if there are a, a data center, what, what, um. Zoning would that be, would that be PI industrial?
Well, right now, we don't technically define them, so if, if there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that specifically allows us to do that interpretation where it could go, then. Then it's normally something you'd have to add, let, add, talk to applicants, like if someone walked through the door and said, I want to apply, make this application. You'd have to tell them, well, we'd have to rezone something for you or start working with them, so that's why we should start talking about it and that's why you should have more, uh. Affirmative legal standing when it comes to what approach we should take for these, because I'll be honest, we've been to the previous, uh, the most recent, um. Planning conference and, and, and the normal approach I would advocate for, I'm starting to hear, uh, that it might not be the, the. One with the most solid legal footing, so I'd like to get, uh, legal advice from council about best way to approach that, or for these. Whether it's data centers or whatever, it's the next thing that, that is gonna walk through the door, how to approach them, but then, uh. For us, I really think for these, it's about. Basically being, and we were just talking about it a little bit, it's just being a consistent approach as what we have done with solar and with wind. But then it'll have its own specific criteria and, and specific requirements, because mainly the issue with these is, from what I've heard colloquially, is, uh, is the water issue. And the, and the, and that sort of thing, so that's the main thing that could impact, uh, the aquifers in the area and that sort of thing, if it, that was, if that's even an option, I don't even. They're selling these volumes, I don't know if it's an option.
Ninety-seven percent of the data center water usage is municipal water.
Municipal well.
Right, yes.
No, municipal water supply.
Oh, I heard it was municipal well, did I read it wrong?
Well, no, these are siphons out of the lake.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, right, they.
But here's the thing is, we don't have municipal water, but what if, uh, data center wanted to propose a zoning change? Say in a large parcel nearby a, a, a township that does have a water supply?
Right.
And I believe some like Fenton Township, they, they're now on some, uh, some amount of, um, Carignandi?
Thompson Road, it's, it's.
Yeah, so Carignandi, which is a huge siphon out of the lake you're on, is not far away.
Right.
So even though we don't have water, that.
It's nearby enough.
It's nearby enough where it, it, it's a threat.
Right, and to, from what I know, once again, just colloquially reading newspaper articles, I haven't talked to their planner yet. But one of the largest ones is one down by U of M in Celine Township, and they're nowhere near municipal water, so I don't know where they're getting their water from, the only, I presumed, I, well, not. Well, maybe, depending on how close it is, I guess Syo does have some, so maybe, but, but in the end, it's, it, it might be a municipal system, but they might still be off of a well, it's not like out there, they're, they're Gliwa.
Do they, do they not have their own water plant, because a lot of them.
Yeah, some of them do, right, well, that's what I mean by.
So I used to work at a bunch of them actually out in California when I lived there, and I mean, a, a lot of them were out in. More rural areas and not, I mean, there was a couple like in, in the cities, like I think there was like one in, like, Wilshire in downtown LA and a couple others. Um, I think there's one in LAX or something, but, um, but none of them, most of them were out.
Right, and but from, from what I would imagine in terms of any type of use that is. Has some kind of intense, uh, utility requirement, it's all about them basically going out, finding where they could find a deep well. Or finding community that already has a, has, has a municipal system, but it's on their own well system. But you know, to me, then that means they could go anywhere in the state, even to California in the desert, and if they get big enough straw in the ground and a big enough aquifer that could work. I believe we're being targeted generally speaking, just because we're obviously proximity to the Great Lakes. Uh, but, so that's why it's curious why the one out in, in Celine is, is going forward, I, I think it's more because it's U of M and everything, uh, associated, but, uh. I don't know, like I said, well, I should, I should stop and not speculate anything on the utilities, but, but knowing that that will be a question, I think is an important thing to. To consider and that's why we will probably be immediately tasked with it by the board.
Well, we haven't been tasked with it, but I think it goes back to ex officio, if we said, hey, ex officio, can you check with the board, do you think, you know, we should start working on this, I mean. We can work on things without more direction, right, but we don't wanna spend our resources doing stuff that is not in line with, uh, governing body that has the final authority.
Yep.
Do we need a ordinances against it?
Yeah, eventually it'll be an order.
Right now, in terms of the current zoning that we have, we, there's nothing that's a direct fit, but we do have some similar fits in the Pyro district.
Pyro.
Which, uh, none of it exists, like, no, we have no lands currently zoned Pyro, but I, I think that if someone were to come in and apply under the Pyro district, they could potentially get something in. But that is a rezoning process and we need to go through all of the, the procedures for a rezoning, um, but it, it's high technology research office type uses.
Would, would I be out of line, Mr. Chairman, if I asked if we could make a recommendation for a moratorium while we're in discussion? It's not that there's a threat, it's just, it's always good to be cautious, that's one, that, that's my thoughts, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, I.
Overstep boundaries here, but it's just something.
How, what would a moratorium be on, can you put a moratorium on a, 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 a user out there?
At least while we figure, yeah.
Or does it have to be a moratorium on, on any applications in that potential zoning?
Well, I, I believe that it would be just specific to the use, because that would encompass the zoning and, and the rest, and I mean, that's typically the way we would do that. In terms of a recommendation, are you saying, do you wanna make a motion, because I.
No, just a recommendation that, like, maybe we can just have the discussion with, 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 like, maybe you can, you know, ship that back to Greg or whatever, if that. I don't know if, I mean, do you guys want, would it be mo- motion worthy, something like that? Mr. Chairman?
I, I think it, it could be, I mean, I think if we're, if we're handling business on that topic, it's, it's, I think it's tough if it's not really on the agenda, I don't know, I mean, it can.
Let's maybe, I, I guess. Maybe just informally ask.
Yeah, our, our motion, our recommendation is, is just a recommendation.
I don't know what the agenda even looks like for the next board meeting, they might even have it on, on next week's agenda.
Yeah, I, I think, um, if anything, um, we can still get together as a subcommittee and, and meet with supervisor, right?
Yeah.
And you, we can have a group discussion on that and have our thoughts, even though we don't have a ex officio, we could still have that made.
Can, can we do that, that, that subcommittee meeting before the next board meeting to sit down?
It could be, the subcommittee meeting could be an email chain, as long as it's not a court.
Right, right.
Yep.
So you can email, copy me, send, send it to supervisor, I, I would recommend that, you, you know about those things.
For what it's worth, this commissioner does. For what it's worth, this commissioner definitely thinks it's moratorium-worthy, so.
Good.
My two cents.
Awesome.
So are you going to be asking for the ex officio on the agenda for next meeting? Is that what you guys are talking about?
What do you recommend?
We recommend to have an ex officio.
We need to have one with the board's one that needs to appoint.
Yeah, it's not us, it doesn't.
We can't demand that they put...
We were just having a discussion about it.
No, I did, I did, similar to a potential moratorium for data centers, I did mention that as subcommittee members that are present here, Kevin and I are going to get together and discuss it with Greg.
If you're waiting for the lawsuit to get settled on the land.
Right, and that's what I thought too.
I was told there's reasons, but I think we can, we can get, we can get with supervisor on both those topics.
Okay.
Any other miscellaneous business? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
Motion is support to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. Meeting is adjourned.
I got a bee line over there, target. Yeah, I hope so. She's like, will you pick up?
You got the same problem there.
Yeah?
Can I go to the pharmacy?
I hopefully.